For a pledge of the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, by the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
The Secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
Here.
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 Here. Okay. Okay. All the members have received the minutes from the July 5th meeting?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second it. Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is a adjourned public hearing for the Patero subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, good evening. Last, we were before the board, I think, the primary, one of the primary issues was the detailing the turning radius for the fire apparatus on the lot with the existing home. So we provided that information with our last submittal. I can tell you that we have on the backside, that's not only a town wetland, but also a DEC wetland. That map is up there for signature block, so we have that left in. There's also a federal slash town wetland that resides on one of the adjoining lots. Based upon the buffer and so forth, it does come into some areas where we're actually doing some work. Primarily just the driveway, in order to allow for this two-lot subdivision, we've got to widen it a little bit. So it falls into that area of the driveway, we're going to be a little bit widening. So that's the essence of the permit we're going to need for that. The plan is up to the Health Department, and it's under active review.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant on this, before we turn it over to the staff?
No, I don't think so.
No?
Not yet.
All right, so we start with the planner, why don't you address any of the open issues that we have currently?
I think that you've addressed all of my concerns. We wanted an updated area of disturbance. That area of disturbance is included in the updated EAF that we received with this application. I did not see that area of disturbance labeled anywhere on the plans. Typically, I just look to make sure that they're the same number, but, you know.
Yeah, we get that.
Just some housekeeping there.
Just the driveway that disturbs?
It's the driveway, and then the grading for the second house.
Yeah, the physical, the anticipated of total disturbance includes the work on the front.
So it'll be modifications to the driveway, and the second house, the septic for the second house.
Okay.
The footprint, any grading that would be needed for that. I believe the area of disturbance on the EAF is listed as 1.73 acres. We can get that label on the plans.
Yep.
As you mentioned, you're going to need a wetland disturbance permit from the town, and access and maintenance easements on the shared driveway. And then the last item on mine is secret action. It's an unlisted action, but we have yet to decide whether or not to pursue coordinated or uncoordinated review. If we want to pursue a coordinated review, we should circulate for lead agency if it's in the interest of the board.
So with that, do we want to do a, do we want to do a coordinated review, or just let them do their process, go through their process with, I believe it's only DEC, correct?
I think so.
So. DEC and the Health Department.
And the Health Department, too, right?
And they're already aware and involved in the project, so.
Well, the Health Department's basically for the septic. So those are the only two agencies really that are involved in here.
And that's pretty much going to handle anything we'd do anyway.
Yeah, they could be conditioned, I guess, as a, you know, in the resolution at the end of the day. So, otherwise, we have to put it out for lead agency for 30 days, and then it's going to have to come back again, and.
You think it's necessary?
I don't think it's necessary in this one.
That could hurt.
Because I think it's a minimal, I just think it's a minimal, you know, there's some minimal things here. Yeah, and once the letters come in, obviously, the applicant's going to have to forward all the information to, you know, to us and the staff, so, you know, at least we'll be aware of it.
Right.
So.
I don't think we need it.
No?
As long as everything's conditioned in the resolution.
All right, so we'll have them do an uncoordinated review. Okay, so entertain a motion to, for this application to be performed under an uncoordinated review, as, you know, for secret.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes care of that one. Engineering, have any outstanding issues on this?
No, they've addressed the majority of our concerns. Really, it's just getting their outside agency approvals at this point, and we're satisfied.
Okay. All right, well, this is an adjourned public hearing, so, being that we are here, I do have to open up the floor to public comment.
Understood.
So, at this point, is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak on behalf of the Patero subdivision? Okay, seeing none. At this point, entertain a motion, I guess, to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded. All right, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Yeah, I mean, at this point, I mean, I don't, is there anything really left for us to do at this point? I mean. We have to, we'll have to, I mean, are we ready to draft for a resolution?
I think so.
You think so?
Yeah.
Just put the, just put the, just the conditions in there, and.
Yeah, we would say that we performed it as an uncoordinated review, and then we would include your secret determination, and I can have that resolution for your review at the next meeting.
Okay.
We have to put DEC in, everything in there, too, or no?
Well, it'd be a condition, well, it'd be one of the conditions, that they get DEC, you know, DEC's approval for the.
They'll have to get their outside approvals.
Right. That they get the approval from them, you know, as well as the Department of Health, which is just a standard, you know, standard one, anyway. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the planner to draft a resolution.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you, folks.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, we have our next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Verizon Wireless Communication Facility on Didel Road. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, my name is Scott Olson, I'm here to represent Verizon Wireless. So what we have is a new, or an application for a new personal wireless service facility, which is regulated under the Telecommunications Act. As you know, when we were here last month, it includes 120-foot monopole cell tower, located on the back parcel of the property, kind of towards where the elevation starts to go up. It's needed for a couple of reasons. One is we just need to add new frequencies that were acquired a few years ago, it's the 2100 megahertz frequency, that is currently not in service in this general area. Exhibit 5 shows you the RF analysis that demonstrates the dearth of service in that frequency, and then what will happen as a result of this installation and operation. Before we chose this, we considered about eight, nine alternative locations. That set forth in the site selection analysis as to why they didn't pan out. Some of the property owners were not interested in leasing the property to us. Some of the properties had elevations that were too low for the, for the service to be provided in an adequate manner. And we were basically left with this parcel, which I believe was the former site of an AT&amp;T proposal that never went anywhere. Having said that, AT&amp;T is not involved with this at all, right now, this is just Verizon Wireless. But should the tower be built and constructed, it will be designed and installed so that it can accommodate AT&amp;T or other wireless carriers. Structurally, enhancements will not be necessary, the foundation will be designed and built to accommodate the additional load from those carriers if the desire is there. We provided a site select, oh, sorry, a site compliance report in the application, and it was completed by a certified New York engineer, or certified by a New York State licensed engineer. And it's important, because in that report, he confirms that this site, once developed and operational, will be fully compliant with the FCC emission requirements. That's significant, because under the Telecommunications Act, once that's done, no state or local municipality can consider any environmental impacts associated with the radio emissions, the signal emissions. So we've demonstrated that we're going to be below 1% of that which we are legally permitted to operate. It's a very low-power technology. So that's provided in the application. Probably the most important thing is the balloon test that was conducted in the spring, I think it was the third week of April, if I remember correctly. It was done in the leaf-off condition, so the leaves had not come out yet. And we looked at about 64 different locations, and we provided those locations to the board. I think the board provided some additional guidance as to where we should look. We looked at all those locations, and the significance was, of those 64, the balloon was only visible from seven of the locations. It will not be visible from the rail trail, we took about five or six pictures from those, that location, of those locations. It's not visible from there. And where the balloon and tower will be visible from, it's only partially visible. So if you looked at the simulations, and those are specifically Simulation 1, 4, 7, 13, 15, 39, and 40, which I do have here on one of the boards, but honestly, you're not going to be able to see it from where you sit. Again, it's only a small portion of the tower that pokes up above the trees, so it's not even a full view of the tower. So in our view, the photo simulation balloon test was extremely successful. When you have seven locations that, the tower will be visible from out of 64, we, that's, we've done a lot of these, and that's, that's really pretty good, so. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay. All right, does any of the staff have any questions currently? Because I do believe, no, actually, there was no new letters, right?
Yeah, there were new plans, and so there were no new letters.
That's right.
We conducted our reviews the last time, or the planning board. You know, I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have, I reviewed the visual impact analysis, so.
All right, it wasn't very, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of location, it doesn't show as much, to what was originally thought.
And on that, I got, I received two letters from Tectonic yesterday. I drafted the letter today, I wasn't going to bring it with me, just because you wouldn't have had a chance to look at it, but we do respond to the two outstanding letters.
Okay.
And they're relatively minor comments, but I'm going to have that sent out tomorrow, so you'll have it. I'll email you, too. I apologize, just, I got it yesterday.
Okay, and, okay, and then we're also waiting our RF analyst to review the project as well.
And I believe that, I know he was in contact with me and our RF engineer, so I'm sure his review will be forthcoming shortly, he's pretty quick.
Yep. Okay, so with that, I guess we'll open up the floor to public comment this time, so anybody who wants to speak, then step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jose Seco, my parcel is actually next to this one here, and.
What was it?
Yeah, what was your address?
Yeah, the address.
It's 7-12 Car Wheel Lane.
Okay.
Yeah, okay?
Yep.
Obviously, I wasn't aware that this was going to take place. I like more information on it, obviously, because of concerns I do have. Primary concern would be limits of our exposure in micro watts, the EMF safe distance, which is set up as 200 meters or 1,338 feet, and environmental impact study on this. Exactly where the tower is going to be set. Now, I do know this is a application by DCE already vehicles from Verizon.
Oh, you can't hear him?
I don't think it's on.
Just check, see if that's on.
Just angle it a little better, closer, please.
Just keep it closer, yeah, yeah.
Better?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Okay.
An environmental impact study, if it's been done, would definitely like to see it, because of, very much a point of interest to me, especially where that tower's going to be set. In order to be, you know, the proper distance away from my property.
Yeah, we, I mean, they're having, I mean, we're having it, the analy, it's being analyzed for where it's going currently, so, you know, I don't think they're, I think the applicant's not looking to move the.
But, as I already seen, okay, this past weekend, on Saturday, four Verizon vehicles with two poles. So this is a preliminary application, there's already work being started.
Shouldn't be, metal poles or telephone poles?
There are the Verizon telephone poles and a truck.
Where, on the property, or you're talking about on the.
They park right there in front of the property, there's a, the site that's being proposed.
Yeah, but that's, if that's in the public right of way, it's not part of this project.
It's not, not on public property that they put it on, no.
Okay, well, somebody, we'll have somebody check in for them.
No work is being started on this by Verizon Wireless.
Okay.
But there were four, four vehicles there, one with a trailer and two poles.
Okay, all right, you just, just address, you only addressed the board, isn't it?
Okay.
No cross-talk between the applicant?
No problem.
Okay.
I didn't interrupt him, so it.
Okay, so what's, so you're, so what other, is there any other concerns that you have?
Okay, those are the primary concerns there, because I also know that there hasn't been a, a stake survey done of the property, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Victor Marjiata, I live at 5 Mina Drive in Wappingers. And first and foremost, I just want to say, having lived in that house for 45 years, although we did not have cell phones for 45 years, but in the last 25 or so, I'm, we've had horrible service, so I'm very glad that Verizon is doing something about it, finally. But in light of that, I do have some concerns, and both of the concerns are regarding the placement of where this utility pole is going to be placed.
So which, which project are we talking about? This is, this is the project, there's three projects on the agenda, this is the project that's on Didel Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about Spook Hill.
Okay, sorry, okay, all right. All right, so is there anybody here that wishes to make comment regarding this, the Didel Road site?
Yeah, we own the property that lots it.
Please state your name and address for the record, please. You can raise the microphone a little bit, but.
Jessica Toulon, 87 Didel Road, so directly next door.
I'm Deb Toulon, same address. Can we see where the cell tower's going to actually go? I never saw a picture, is, on the property.
Where, on the, to the back of the property?
Does he have a thumb drive to put it on the screen? I don't know. Do you have a thumb drive to put it on the screen? Any chance?
No. Okay.
Because our concerns for all of this is, obviously, our house is right along the property line there, it's very, very close to that property line of where it's going to be, so we are going to see it, we most definitely would probably be the, one of those seven sites that can see this place. And if they have to put a light on it for the airport, or any of those kind of thing, that's going to shine toward our house. So I see this, one, is majorly decreasing our property value, for one, have the cell tower right off our property line, right there. And of course, the health hazards and everything, the other gentleman was saying there, we are also concerned about. I mean, yes, cell service in our area is absolutely horrible, everybody jokes about that at my barn, they all say we have no cell service, we just kind of take that as a given. But, yeah, we're very concerned, because our house is very near that property line right there, and it's going to be right there. And we already do see trucks coming in that property, it might not be Verizon, but there's definitely trucks working on the back of that property, because we're right there, we can see it, so.
Plus, the tower's probably going to have to have a light on it, right?
That's what I just said, yeah, I said about the light.
Yeah.
Which is then going to shine in our house, and things that we're going to, you know, it'll be lighting up our whole back of our property, with our animals and everything else, which is not something, something we're very concerned about. There's a whole other corner to that property, Sid Corbin also owns both sides of our property, but a lot of property on the other side that no houses are near, so I'm not really sure why they want to put it on this piece, which is near all the houses. They got Daniel Sabia Drive, and ours, and the houses in the front, all line this property. So, but the other one has nothing, so I'm not really sure why it's not over on that side, but this side, that's our concern, is it's very close to our home, we're going to be able to see it, definitely there, without a doubt, we will see it out our deck, yeah, so.
All right, just one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, those lit up.
I'll ask them, is this, with this tower, is there a light being proposed on the tower?
We're still waiting for FAA.
Okay.
So I don't have the answer to that. I don't, my personal objection is no, it probably won't need to be, because I'm.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So it's before FAA right now, so they'll make the ultimate determination. I'm not sure that it's going to have to be, just because my recollection of the property is, is a big hill behind the property, and that's kind of where, I mean, the hill is going to be much taller than the tower, so I would be surprised if it has to be lit, but we'll find out.
Why wouldn't the tower have to be?
There's really no hill behind it, no?
Yeah.
No, it goes down, you're putting it pretty much the highest part of the property, and then it goes down.
Yeah.
We'll find out from the FAA.
Okay, yeah.
But then our concern would be, once this tower is built, we are no longer going to be able to say, you can't put a light on that property, and so they're going to, I mean, obviously, they did it all along the, you know, Central Hudson lines that are, you know, the power lines that are going through, and we see those red blinking lights through our house, but there's nothing you can do about that, but, yeah.
Once they put more cell systems on it, the tower probably raised even higher, are allowed to go, what, 20 feet or something?
Maybe another 20.
So that's even going to be more of a.
Jim, the, what's the additional height that could be added at a later date?
What is it, 10% up to 20 feet?
Exactly.
10% up to 20 feet.
10% up to 20 feet, okay.
So here.
So on a 120-foot pole, we're talking possibly 12 feet.
Yeah, well, another 12 feet, right?
What was it, 10%, correct?
10%, or 20 feet, whichever is a lower cap, so another 12 feet.
Okay.
I mean, would it be possible to move it a lot more to the right of the property?
I mean, the property makes an L.
No, no, just direct the board. Direct it aboard, there's no cross, we'll, we'll ask the questions that the consultants have needed, okay? So, I mean.
The property as it sits makes an L, which gets it further from our property line, and right now, where they're saying it's going to be, it's very close to our property line.
And it wouldn't be closer to any other property line, I don't think.
Okay. All right.
So, I mean, that's our concern, so we don't know how to stop this, but I know there's nobody who wants the cell tower right next door to their house, and, yeah, because that's a really nice property. They can text us here, we do not want a cell tower right next to my house, and our bedroom's right on that side, everything's right there, and I wouldn't.
Okay, no, we're here, we understand, we've taken, we've noted the comments. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that likes, wish to make a comment on the Didel Road cell tower?
My name is Leonard Paulhemus, I live on 26 Laurel Park Road, which is actually within the town of La Grange. I've lived there since I built the house in 1975, and I own adjoining property. This is my son, who's much more eloquent than I am, but I am a licensed pilot and an electrical engineer, and I've already wrestled with this lawyer in the past. So I'm going to let my son speak for me. But the other thing that I would like to know, is since I have adjoining property, why didn't I get a letter? I happened to hear from a neighbor who got the letter.
Oh, yeah, what's your property address?
26 Laurel Park Road, Wappinger Falls, New York, 12590.
Okay. All right, now we'll check into the reason why that wasn't.
I can guess, but.
Okay.
So Len Paulhemus, as well, 26 Laurel Park Road. Not only in addition to the certified letter that my father didn't receive, there was no notification around the balloons flying as well, either, and he drove by the property where the site's being proposed, and there was no sign out there being displayed as well to the public about this public hearing that's happening, so it wasn't out for display. What I would like to continue on here with is, I'd like to note that Verizon and Scott Olson previously stated, as part of their lawsuit against the town of La Grange, that the Corbin Farm was not a viable alternative to the proposed site on an adjacent property, and I quote, "due to the fact that the maximum height of a new tower at such location would be limited to 56 feet," and they, as they were pushing the board for this accelerated approval, threatening them with lawsuits. The town board is being misguided by Scott, who clearly knows that the tower will be required to be lit. The FAA evaluation, if we haven't had it completed yet, I'm asking that that be provided to the public, as with the other documents that have been provided out to the public. The prior FAA study for the adjacent property required that the tower have a 24-hour-a-day light, and be painted bright red and white. Does not appear in any study that was done, or any town zone zoning variance granted for this application itself. Also requests that the public hearing remain open, or that we have another one, so that the public can comment if indeed the tower is not pictured in the Verizon-provided balloon test study simulation, and requires that balloons be flighted again, or the simulation show what a lighted tower painted red and white at this height will actually look like. I also want to understand, and would ask the town board to ask this question, why parcel 285420 wasn't being considered as a primary candidate, as it has a higher elevation, it requires a smaller tower, it provides a better view shed and coverage across the area of concern that Verizon has listed, it's significantly further from other people's residence, with the closest being more than 1,200 feet away from the lady you just heard from.
What was that lot number?
It is 285420. It is 285420. It wouldn't require any setback variations, and has the same owner as the proposed property. There's no reason listed in the application as to why this property is not being prioritized. To that point of limited disturbance, there's also another property, Amy Waterfield's property. The parcel ID for that is 600360. It has a ground elevation above the 350 feet minimum required by Verizon. It sits both 1,275 feet and 2,190 feet away from the nearest structures, so it wouldn't require any setback variance either. It also sits alongside Central Hudson's power lines, so it's minimizing the disturbance across our beautiful town. So I wanna understand why that property is not being prioritized as well. And then, the stated primary purpose of this tower is to offload traffic or capacity deficiencies of Verizon's older technology sites, such as Emmer and New Hackensack sites. As it's a cheaper alternative, just drop another tower, right, in all of our backyards across our town, versus a more expensive option of updating the bandwidth capacity, the range of the current towers. So can the town ask for an evaluation of updating current sites to meet the increased load demand versus just placing a new tower? Is this just a cost arbitrage play? And then finally, due to the misguidance, some might say pure lying that was done previously, around the coverage gap, I'd like to request that the planning board have an independent radio frequency engineer review the application and requirements for this cell tower specifically.
Okay, all right, well, we do have a, we do have an RF engineer looking at the project currently, we just haven't gotten a report back yet from him. In regards to your comment regarding the, the public hearing notice, it was posted on the site, and we do have proof of that, so if for some reason it got taken down in between, unfortunately, we can't, you know, we can't account for that. You know, it could have been, you know, it could have been blown down in a storm or whatever, you know, nobody's out there checking on a regular basis, but they did.
Very possible, but we know a certified letter wasn't delivered to my father.
Yeah.
We know for a fact that.
Well, we will, we will follow, we'll follow up and check up on that.
All of these properties are in the flight path for landing at the, the new Hudson Valley Regional Airport, and so the guidance from there was, this thing has to be lit 24/7 with a pretty bright light and painted red and white like a, like a candy cane.
Okay, all right.
And in, in the effort of Dutchess County to build and grow this airport, as a licensed pilot who's got several hundred hours in and out of this airport, this is the second time that it's gonna be in the flight path. And I live right underneath where you turn base, and I watch these guys come in, and now you got more student pilots with the community college in there, with a, with a much bigger flight school. There's gonna be a problem, and I know I'm gonna end up talking to the guy in FAA again. And the other problem is, the radiation.
You know that.
Okay. Also, as an electrical engineer, and my specialty was transmission of data, the radiation on the kids that are sleeping underneath this all night long with this constant RF against them, bad, bad medicine, just bad medicine. Anyway, this is the second time around on this, and I'm more than frustrated.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll address concerns. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding the Didel Road cell tower site? Okay, seeing none at this time. I guess. We're probably gonna have to. Because we have to get this addressed by, by our RF specialist. I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Second. All right, before we do so, we have to set a date to adjourn this, is that correct?
Yes.
So our, let me just see. We won't have enough time to get all their reports back. Yeah, that's, I'm not sure where they stand with everything right now, so the.
I would like to, to not only get the RF specialist's report back, but also give enough time to hear back from the FAA.
Well, that was all for, yeah, I'm just trying to get, our next, or, we only have the one meeting in August, which is probably gonna be too soon. And then the following meeting is August, or sorry, September the 6th, correct? Because we're meeting on the Wednesday after Memorial Day. Yeah, so, let me ask you a question, Mr. Olson, is the, if we adjourn this to another date, would it be more preferable, would it be the September the 6th or the 18th? Correct.
Let's try September the 6th, that's okay.
Okay, I believe there's nothing, they don't have anything out for the 6th yet. Okay.
And if I may just, I think we have to deal with the shot clock. Since it's being adjourned, you know, the shot clock is the federal rule, basically, that says these things have to be decided. My calculation is that the shot clock was over last week, so if we can just get an adjournment of that, I can send a letter.
Sure.
But I'll put it to, I gotta put it to your October meeting, probably, because, and then we can see where it goes from there, so that's okay with the board.
Okay, I mean, we, yeah, we'll just, yeah, if we just adjourn this for now, so we can just get the answers on everything that we need to address, and then we can move forward from that meeting, so.
Okay.
Do you want a motion on that? Like, the board?
On the, for the shot, to extend the shot clock?
Extend the shot clock.
Well, the shot clock's actually on their side, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think we have too much to say on that.
I'll do a letter, send it around, just saying that we consented, we probably will just ask for a counter-signature, that's all. And we'll do it till the 2nd October meeting, if that's suitable.
Okay, so, okay, so with the, so back to where we were, we were just, we were, we were amending the, or, sorry, adjourning the public hearing to September 6th. You guys wanna amend that?
Yeah.
Okay, so both, first, okay, so motion's made, seconded, all in favor? Aye.
B, what's the date on the second meeting in October?
The 18th.
The 18th.
No, 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 he's.
No, 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 October, October 16th is the second meeting.
16, October 16, okay.
Okay. So with that, we're going to move on to our next public hearing, which is a site plan and special use permit for Verizon Wireless Kent Road Small Wireless Facility. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing for Kent Road. Second. Okay, motions made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
So, good evening again, for the record, Scott Olson, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. As we spoke during the last meeting, this along, and I know this is just a hearing for Kent Road, but this is very similar to the Spook Road.
Spook Hill Road.
Hill Road 1. They're two small cells, they're designed to be small cells, so we don't have to put a larger tower up to cover the areas, but obviously, this is Kent Road, this is, it's a 43-foot wooden utility pole that we're proposing to install. On top of that, there'll be a 2-foot, 2.2-foot antenna. So the total height will be 46.2 feet, which is lower than 50 feet, which under the federal regulations categorizes this as a small cell facility. And so, this, again, we're trying to provide, well, we intend to provide new coverage through the 21 megahertz frequency, which is a mid-band frequency, it's not there. That will help relieve, alleviate the capacity issues that we have, as well as providing new service to the area that, I think everybody, whether they like these projects or not, I think everybody agrees, the service is pretty difficult, it's pretty bad. This area in general has been a challenge, because of topography, residential neighborhoods. In fact, one of the reasons why we proposed to do two small cells in these, in these two ones, is because there are a lot of residences in the nearby area. So we thought, put a utility pole in place, it's consistent with the other utility poles, slightly taller, but at least that way it's not a visual intrusion. Same thing, we have a site compliance report that demonstrates that this will be fully compliant with the FCC, so I know there was a, comments before about radiation, I think they're alluding to health effects. Once we demonstrate full compliance, this board can be, well, be assured, maybe you're not assured, but there's not, nothing that can be done, we've proven compliance, so. And then I would just point to the visual analysis that we provided with the application, it shows you what it looks like in three different locations. It's a fairly typical small cell, it's a wooden utility pole, sourced from the same poles that the, you know, Verizon, New York Telephone use. All the equipment will be looking on the pole, not on the ground. In a nutshell, that's what we're looking to do for Kent Road.
Okay, do you have a visual for the, this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have visuals here, again, you want to see them up close?
Yeah, well, I know, I know what we've got in our package, yeah.
Turn it to the application package, anyone in the hall.
Yeah, you can turn it to the.
Yeah, I can see if you're, if you're coming on. So, yeah, visuals are there.
Okay. All right, does any of the staff have any questions, concerns for the applicant?
No, not since, not since they were here before us, previously.
All right, so seeing none, board doesn't have any questions? No, none of these. Okay, so I'll open up the floor for public comment for the Kent Road Wireless Facility site. So anybody wishing to speak, come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Juan Acosta, the owner of Two Baldwin Drive, Wappinger Falls.
My wife, Magdalena Acosta, who lived on that street.
That same property that the cell tower's gonna be put on. And my concerns are, the size of, the size of the tower and the location of the tower, if it's gonna be close to the street, to the corner, or is it gonna be setback? The concern is that, that road is a crossroad from All Angels to Myers Corners, and these cars are going through there pretty quick. By the time you turn around, that curve that comes across, the cars are right up on top of you. And my concern is my child, or somebody leaving my house is gonna get hit by a car if there's something blocking it. All right. And we had, we also had a problem with Verizon, the, well, the reception is terrible.
Our service is horrible in our house on this corner, and just last week, they sent me an LTE extender, and it's a box that I connected to the router, and my service is wonderful now. So I don't know why everybody can't get that box, and your service would be great, because I have full lines of phone, servers, data, everything on my cellphone, right in my house, where I used to get cut off from phone calls 10 times, I couldn't even call back.
I was outside the house.
From making a phone call. So I'm just saying, this is a box that was given to us for free from Verizon, and it's helped a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I was literally trying to call her from outside the house, in the car, and I couldn't get hold of her.
And now we get really good service.
Good service, so.
But I also have the same concerns that gentleman had, I did alter what he said. I would like to know, in writing, concerns, health reasons, and every other reason for having this pole right on my property, because that's where they said they were gonna put it.
Right, correct. Yeah, and that's what our RF, our FLO analyst will review, to make sure that, you know, that they are within the, within the federal regulations.
Right.
And when that report, yeah, and when that report is, is received, it will be posted on the website for everybody to review. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. There was no line of sight issue, was there? Says it's on the corner. It's on the bend there.
I think we had raised comments regarding site distance. I can't remember, I think John raised questions, just asking for site distance information to be added to the plans.
Yeah.
To make sure that it would not cause the exact issue that was just raised.
Okay, okay.
We have not received updated plans since.
Right, so they still have to address that comment. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application for Kent Road?
Hi, I'm Robin Lucary, I live at 15 Red Hawk Hollow Road. My question is, how many towers are being proposed at this point in the town of Wappingers? I'm trying to figure it out, I know there's one in Chelsea, what do we have, about four going on right now, and how many, how many towers are proposed at this point?
Right, so there's the one, the, the one site, which is on Didel Road, which is a 120-foot tower, and there's other two that are on Kent Road and Spook Hill Road. Both of those are, basically, they're smaller antennas, which are being put on top of telephone poles.
Okay, and what's the current status of the one that's supposed to be going in the Chelsea area?
The one that's in Chelsea has been construct, it's been constructed.
It is constructed at this point, okay, all right. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, is there anyone else that has any questions or concerns regarding the Kent Road site? Okay, seeing none. What's the board's pleasure with this? We still have. Well, we need the line of sight stuff, right? Yeah, I mean, it's really the line of, the line of sight and also the RF analyst report. Again, I think it might be. Same thing with. If we adjourn this off to September the 6th. Mr. Olson, is, if we adjourn this also to September the 6th, would that be acceptable?
As, as long as, I'll do the same thing with the shot clock, just to confirm that.
Yeah.
It's just really housekeeping, so that I can tell them it's adjourned, it's been adjourned and extended.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, and so at this time, we'll make a, somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn it to September the 6th? I'll make that motion, I'll second it. All right, motion made, seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion carries. Now, we will go to our third public hearing regarding the Verizon Wireless Sites for Site Plan and Special Use Permit. This one is at Spook Hill Park. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing. So move. Motion's made. Seconded. Seconded, all in favor? Aye. The floor is yours.
I'll make it brief, Scott Olson, for the record, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. So this is the other small cell facility that we're proposing, it's identical in height, it's gonna be a 43-foot tall wood utility pole with a 2.2-foot antenna on top. Again, it's, it's in a residential area, so these small cell facilities, we try to make them look as much like a utility pole as possible, because there are existing utility poles out throughout the town. So that's what we've tried to do here. Like, the same thing, we have a site compliance report, this will be fully compliant with the FCC emission regulations. We have visuals for that also, that will provide it in the original application. Anybody can look at them, but again, same exact design, just different location, same purpose.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll ask the board, does the board have any questions for the applicant? No. Okay. Does the staff have any questions regarding this application? Okay.
Now, I just, I just remind the board that we had a similar comment on this one about site distance.
Yep, okay, so, okay, with that, I will, this time, open up the floor for public comment. Anybody wishes to speak, come up to the microphone, state name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Delia Engstrom, I live at 21 Spook Hill Road. My property is basically the proposed site. My yard runs the entire perimeter of Spook Hill Road around that turn, so, much like everybody else here, it will now be, if it's approved, part of my daily life, looking at that. life, looking at that. I don't want to bore you with the details, but I would like to say that in 1958, my grandparents bought our 1700s farmhouse. Five generations of my family have lived there and maintained it. My grandfather was an electrician at the bleachery. My mother, grandmother operated a flower nursery on our property. Time has gone by, everybody is deceased. My husband and I owned the property, and while it was vacant, and sort of falling into disrepair, we made the decision to sell our home in Northern Virginia and relocate onto this property to maintain it, so that all of my lovely neighbors no longer had to look at the home. I have pictures of, I could approach you guys, and I don't have multiple copies, I apologize, but I have pictures of the property from 2019, and then pictures taken today, just to show a small glimpse of the amount of work that we've done to attempt to beautify the property. I will come with another. This is the view that all of my neighbors have across our property and our pond. This was when we began working on the property. This is this afternoon. My husband and I are similarly tired and work part-time, but make our property and the four acres and the 18th-century farmhouse home our full-time job. It was not in the cards when we took on this project that we anticipated that we would have the addition of a 50-foot cellphone tower adjacent to our stone wall. The property is not listed on the historic register, the stone walls, you know, have been here since the home was built, as far as I can tell. No one's around from the 1700s, so I can't verify that. However, this site, besides all the beautification we're doing, the work we're trying to continue to do to upkeep this property, and we have not reached the area of the stone wall that this proposed, proposed site is, that is adjacent to the fire hydrant. However, this tower going in is going to greatly impede our ability to maintain our property line in that area. We mow the outer perimeter. I don't think it's technically, you know, our property, but nobody else is coming to maintain our stone wall and our property. I mow to San and Debbie Weeman, who are there behind me, so we kind of meet up in the middle and make sure that the area is clear as possible, because it is a dangerous curve. I had reached out to the Dutchess County Emergency Response Team back in June, when I first was notified, or not notified, but became aware of the hearing that was going to happen in, I guess it was the end of June, when we first met. It wasn't a public hearing, we were in the senior center room that day. I was notified that pursuant to subsection, I think, 308.4, that the information on the traffic accidents was not available for me to have access to. But, believe it or not, I got some photos. Here's three of the most recent accidents. These are views from outside my house with emergency vehicles lining Spook Hill Road around that turn. There's also a picture of a white SUV that drove through our stone wall in that proposed location, entered our property, and exited our property by banking their car on the stone wall. I grew up in the area, and I think anyone who lives here can speak to the fact that that turn is constantly a source of traffic nightmares. I contacted the lovely Mr. Sheehan of the Town Highway Department, probably in 2021, about my concerns. He wrote me back at, I think, 6:30 in the morning, had his crew out there installing additional, like, slow down, turn coming kind of signs, anything they could do to mitigate the amount of traffic. Their, Spook Hill Road's about a mile and a half long. Half of it is undeveloped land. There has got to be a better location. The thing is named Spook Hill Park, which seems to be a bit of a misnomer. It makes it sound like a swing set's going to be affected versus all of my neighbors who fall within the umbrella of this tower and presumably receive the notifications like I did. I know last month, they spoke to the poles that they had looked at and the reasons why they were not suitable, but I would like to ask that that's readdressed. There was mention that they could not put a tower in a park. I don't know if that just means it requires additional permitting and more work, but there is a hunk in utility pole in the middle of the park, just sitting there by the handball court. Seems like a perfectly viable solution to me. The area that it's proposed is going to put additional wires across Spook Hill Road, forming kind of like a Z of wires in that area. It just seems like, I'm just asking, that something that's not going to impede the line of sight, even though I saw the report and it was deemed that it wasn't, the pictures that are supplied on the other side, the versithy are blooming. That's it. You go drive around my property today, you cannot see the houses that are visible in these photos, because the trees are in bloom. It's just not a great spot. I don't know what else to say. I've spoken to a traffic engineer who suggested the amount of side friction that occurs at that turn, where people coming around, heading northwest, naturally sort of go into the oncoming lane, people coming the other direction are overcompensating for that, and if you throw a utility pole in that spot, I guarantee you, people are going to even jut out further in a spot where there's already a lot of collisions. So, I would ask that we could adjourn the hearing, much like the others, till September. You know, I have concerns about the RF radiation, but my son is a RF engineer, so I feel like, you know, that's not quite as much of a concern for me as much as all of the neighbors and residents that drive on that road, who could possibly be put in danger by that being there. So, I would request maybe an additional traffic study, some more information, and also readdressing possible other locations on the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Spook Hill Road, right?
Yes. So, again, you need the state, name and address. Not quite as good as my hearing aids, but anyway. Again, my name is Victor Margiata. I live at 5 Mina Drive in Wappingers, and I'm still glad that Verizon wants to address the concerns of the poor reception and service that we've had in the area. However, my concerns are similar to my neighbors', and by the way, I can attest to the work that they have done in that property. I remember the Hannah House from their 45 years, and it's always been a pleasure to have in our community, and now it's getting enhanced and refurbished, and we appreciate that. But my concerns, as I had mentioned before, is really the placement of this utility pole for two reasons. The first reason is safety, and I refer to photos P3 and S3. I'm not sure if they're on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, P3 and S3, which was page 90 of the 125-page document that they submitted. And in that, it shows the view that I see as I exit Mina Drive onto Spook Hill Road. And when I look to the, to the right and look towards the intersection, we have a problem of limited visibility, especially in the summer when the trees are full and leafed. You don't see what's coming around that turn until it's already made the turn. This, this utility pole will just be another obstruction, but this one's permanent, and I'm very concerned about that. So, I hope that there is a traffic study that is done. Spook Hill Road had to be addressed years ago to try to improve line of sight and was lowered at one point approaching Mina Drive from Myers Corners, and they had wanted to address that turn, but that never happened. The turn is historic, so it'll probably be there after I'm gone. But the other concern that I have actually arose when I, when I received the letter, and they said that this was for Spook Hill Park, and my thought went immediately to the playground, Spook Hill Park currently incomplete, but hopefully we'll get there. And, and that's where I just assumed that this tower was going. Then, when we saw the documents that were submitted, we realized it was going to be right on Spook Hill Road, just a couple of feet off from the pavement, and immediately after you make the turn. I think it'll scare the hell out of some people, but my thought was, and I don't know if it's the community's place to make suggestions, but why couldn't it go in front of Spook Hill Park? You're on a straight part of Spook Hill Road, there's ample room, there's plenty of setback before you reach the park, and I'm not saying stick it in the park, put it in front of the park. You're putting it in front of somebody's house, it can go in front of town property as well. And the fact that they looked at various holes to see which one might, existing poles that might accommodate, I don't think moving it a few hundred feet's going to make a hell of a lot of difference. So, I, I hope that you can consider that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Okay. Anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this application?
My house is the first house that would be after the proposed pole if you're going west. I've looked at the photographs, and I have two areas of concern, pretty much echoing what my neighbors have already said. The first one is safety. The pole is very, very close to the edge of the road, on the inside of a curve, so pedestrians walk along that side of the road right now, and there's very little space for you to get off the highway if a car is coming. There's very little space, especially if you're walking a dog on the left side of the road, and that's just with the fire hydrant being there. So, adding the pole on the inside of that curve would just make it that much more dangerous for pedestrians. My other area of concern is aesthetics. It's a really pretty curve, and it would change a really pretty curve into a really ugly curve. So, I guess my request is that another location be considered, and like my neighbors said, it seems really appropriate that the pole be placed in front of Spook Hill Park. Verizon trucks are going to need to stop. They can't stop on the curve. They could stop and park very easily in front of the park. So, yeah, I would just ask that that location be considered instead of the proposed location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none. What's the board's pleasure with this application?
Kind of after hearing what they got, is, is there an alternative to moving it off the corner? It does seem like a terrible spot.
So, with these sites, believe it or not, and someone had said, moving it hundreds of feet probably doesn't make a difference, but actually it makes a huge difference.
But what about just the other side?
But I'm not the engineer, so what I was going to say is, I will, you know, I've been taking notes, and I'll have the RF engineer look at that. You know, I heard the concerns, and in terms of, like, moving it 500 feet down the road, again, not the engineer, that's not...
If it ended up on the other side of the road, it'd be on the inside of the corner, not the outside where...
Like I said, I'll, I, no, I hear what you're saying, and I will ask the engineer to provide a response, along with all the other comments that we've, we've heard.
To, to the question regarding whether or not it can be located within the park, one of the concerns is that there's a body of case law that says locating a cellphone tower facility within a park needs an alienation message from the state legislature, which is one of the reasons why they didn't really look at that location. But because of, because of the instance here, as far as, I think what we'll, I'll go back and do is see what we have as far as survey work regarding the width of the right-of-way in front of the park.
Okay.
So that it may not be necessarily located on true park property. That way, the...
Isn't there an island out in front there?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there an island?
Yeah. Well, the question becomes whether or not, I mean, it's, it's a technical issue as to whether it's in the park or, or not in the park. We can also maybe request some, some guidance with respect to that. And we had some issues, we were looking at issues with respect to Carnworth when we ran the water main through Carnworth. I guess, is it OGS? I'm trying to think of who does the alienation. Somebody had, basically had said that there was a determination that should the facility benefit the park itself, it would be permitted, so to the extent that there's bad cell service in the park.
Yeah, I'm not, I hear what you're saying, but we, I've done one alienation, and even an easement through a park requires an alienation process, which means you basically need the governor to, basically pass a bill.
Yeah.
Which involves, you know, the Assembly and Senate to go forward that. With these types of facilities, it's, I don't think it's ever been done. But my first question is, and I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, how far away is the park from this location?
It's about a parcel and a half, you know?
Yeah.
Hundred, hundred feet?
Hundred feet.
Yeah, it's not that far.
Very, very close.
Yeah, I don't know, so I know we did look at...
It's on the opposite side of the road.
Opposite side.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand why it wasn't considered, and the other concern that somebody had raised with respect to the curve is, you know, should that curve be considered to be a dangerous curve? I looked it up, I was looking at the map, you know, the mid, the, frequently, if there's a lot of accidents on the curve, what happens is, you take the property on the inside of the curve to straighten the road. So, to the extent that you're going to straighten the road out, it would have an impact on that, that pole.
Right, the pole would have to be moved again.
Which is, I think, one of the other reasons why there's so much right-of-way in there, which I, I think at some point in time, there might have been contemplation of straightening, straightening that curve, so...
Again, not an engineer, not a traffic engineer. It seems to me the problem is the vegetation, that curve. Yep, it's a, it's a curve, it's a good curve, but it seems to me, like people have said, if you took that vegetation out, it becomes much less of a dangerous curve. But I, I don't, I hear what you're saying, I hear the comments, I have a feeling if you took that vegetation out, I'm not saying it can be done, but this one pole is not going to make it that much more dangerous compared to what you have now. It's, I think, is an existing condition. It's not much different, the pole, than, well, than the trees that are there.
I think we at least have to take a look at relocating the pole.
You know, we can, but I know that, I'll, I'll have a look at it, but we looked at other poles, existing poles that were there, and it just becomes, it's not, we'll look at it. It's not always up to us 100%, it's also up to utility company too.
Yeah, okay.
Scott? So, here's the pole.
Yep.
That's the park.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have the engineer look at it.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that might be, you know, a viable solution is to move, you know?
Yeah.
Have them review it and let us know.
Yeah, I'll ask them and say, hey, is this doable? And if it's doable, we'll let you know. If it's not, we'll let you know why. I don't know the answer to it.
Yep, okay. All right. So, with that, what's the board's pleasure with this public hearing at this point? You just want to adjourn?
Get up.
You want to adjourn it also?
Yeah, get back to answers.
Okay. So, all right, so a motion to adjourn to September... So, all right, so motion to adjourn to September, was it September 6th?
I'll move that.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you. Same deal with the shot clock, we'll do three letters for the shot.
I think it'd be a good idea to get all of your photos and stuff on a thumb drive, so-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't-
No, it's fine.
Yeah, next time, it makes it all easier for the public to see.
We were over in the city center before.
Yeah, last time, right, that was very awkward in that room, to try to conduct a meeting.
It's awkward and hot, that's why, the short sleeve shirt.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Craig, can I ask one quick question? Are residents able to submit photos to be done, or should I come with a thumb drive as well, if I'd like to?
So, yeah, so if there's anybody from the public that wishes to submit a comment or any type of documentation, please just forward it to our, to the planning board secretary, and then she will distribute it to everyone to review.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Sometimes, I know, sometimes just the old boy. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding a site plan and special use permit for Chelsea Ridge wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, everybody. Tad Johnston from Delaware Engineering again, and we are not requesting a cell tower on top of the wastewater treatment plant. So, some updates on some outstanding issues. Today was a busy day, this morning, an email. There was a question of Dutchess County Health Department, or DEC approval. Received a statement from New York State DEC to Dutchess County stating that they are the reviewing and approving agency. There was a subsequent email from Dan Keeler from Dutchess County Department of Health saying he agreed with that and would pass on to DEC for the technical review of the plant, and that Dutchess County Health did not need to do anything. I forwarded those emails to BE, so you guys have them. There was also a request from DEC to put, to create a formal response letter from a couple of emails of comments and responses, which was done by Brock Dusila, the PE in charge of the project. And I forwarded, actually, I forwarded that on to BE, and also, I also forward stuff to Mr. Budendorf, so he can see all of that stuff. So I believe, and from the email that I got from the young gentleman at DEC, he was taking the letter this morning to review with his supervisor. So we are anticipating, hopefully fairly soon, an approval from DEC on the technical design plans of the wastewater treatment plant. We know that will be a condition of, I mean, it's in the draft resolution that we received the copy of, put together by your planner.
Yep.
So I do have a question of where we stand with 239, the 239M review from Dutchess County Planning. Have we heard anything?
Yes, we did. We received a letter. I circulated earlier today a revised resolution, including that it was in fact deemed to be a matter of local concern, as said in their letter dated today, July 17.
You have a chance to look at it.
Okay. So, I mean, I'll pause, and if you guys have any questions, I'd happy to answer them, to continue to sign anything outstanding that-
Any of the board members have any questions?
I don't think they have.
I have none. No, I didn't get a chance to look at that letter, actually, but-
Which one are we talking about?
Everything was circulated today.
Okay. No, the one was the, I know the one was from the Dutchess County Planning, I just no comment.
Okay.
That was, that was a non-issue.
So what do we actually have outstanding on that right now, that we're waiting to hear from?
We're just waiting on the Dutchess, basically DEC. Current, now with the communication from Dutchess County Health Department deferring to New York State DEC, we are, we are still waiting on a final approval letter from New York State DEC on the, on the technical aspect of the plant.
Yeah, that's what really matters, right?
As I said, hopefully we'll have that soon, you can never guarantee when DEC is going to get back to you. I'm sure all your consultants can, will confirm that. So my, so if I am, and I also sent an email to your secretary in the draft resolution, and it's highlighted in the resolution, so the owner's name is incorrect on here.
Yeah, I updated that with the contact information on your site plan application. It was the, it was the contact individual underneath the holding company, so-
Yep, okay.
That was in, in the draft that was circulated today. If that's not the correct person, I'd be happy to amend it, but-
Okay, Jesse Albert.
Jesse Albert, yeah.
She's the authorized rep for Chelsea DHC.
That's the, that's the name.
And that was on the owner consent form that was submitted with the original application. And I believe, so my understanding is that you will either tonight or at some point pass this resolution, and then it needs to be returned to the town with the deed, the proof of taxes paid.
Yep. Once the, to get, to get final approval and sign off, you would need to meet all the conditions that are set forth in, in the resolution. I believe that's also including, you know, your approval from DEC as well.
Yep.
So-
And demonstrating compliance with John's letter, John's most recent comment memo. I understand that you issued a response memo to that, but if you can-
Yes, he, I know he mentioned at the last meeting that he was satisfied with our responses. I haven't, I haven't seen anything further.
No, no, we don't, we don't have any outstanding comments at this point.
Right. Right, it's just, so basically, at the end of the day, it's just incorporating everything into the site plan itself. You know, so all those notes and everything are put within the, within the plan where needed, or additional document, documentation is provided. Once that's submitted, you know, with everything else is put together, the staff will review it to make sure that it's in, you know, in conformance with the resolution. And if it is, you know, at that point, once they sign off, then I can sign it for the, you know, for the final approval at the end of the day.
Right, we have revised plans to address comments. We have, we haven't circulated, we haven't circulated a bunch of our copies of them at this point in time.
So at this, at this point in time, I mean, you've satisfied the needs of the board, and met all the requirements that the board has itself. You know, our staff has, you know, like I said, open-ended concerns with a couple of minor items, which are basically housekeeping issues on the plans that, you know, that won't need you to come back in front of the board again. So, at this point, once we, you know, once we vote on the resolution, you know, you'll be all set with us, and then, you know, just deal with the staff afterwards to finish those little items.
Okay.
So with that said, and again, we're, we have amendments to this resolution, we said, the name was changing, or that was already corrected?
James.
Okay. All right, so it's basically as drafted. Are there any motion to, motion to approve the application, or the resolution as drafted, I mean?
I'll make that.
Okay.
Just a second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries. Okay, so you're all set?
All right, and now, so I'll coordinate with your secretary and-
With the secretary, yep, and any of your submittals will go to her, and she will distribute it to everywhere.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one request. I had gotten some questions regarding odors from the pond at the site, and what was requested is if you could have the operator forward maybe the last two months of submittals to DEC regarding the effluent testing. It was something that some of the town board members had, you know-
From the plant or from the pond that's there?
Is the, are they?
There's a pond, as you-
This pond he's talking about.
As you come in on Popple Drive, there's a pond with a-
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't think, I don't know if they're, if they're required to test the pond, then both. If it's just the outfall, just the, you know, whatever, whatever they've submitted to DEC, whatever, you know, whatever's been submitted to DEC, if we could get a copy, I think, what, Bruce, last two months, last three months?
You did say they test that monthly, right?
Well, you test that anyway, right?
Last time you were, you said monthly.
They have to submit to DEC, I believe it's, they're required to test and submit once a month on effluent quality.
Right.
So I guess maybe the last six months.
The DMR reports.
Yeah, they're DMRs.
Yeah, that's, that's a-
I mean, I can, you can have, if you're requesting three months of DMRs, that's daily reports, that's, I mean, okay.
It can't hurt.
We just, just to, you know, I said we could get it by foil, but-
But is this the, but we're, again, this is the first I'm hearing about the odor issue, which wasn't brought up before, but is this on the, is this the pond that's on Chelsea Road? So you have that, you have that small pond on Chelsea Road?
Yeah, that's-
Which is at the entrance when you, to get back to this plant. Is that where the odor is coming from, or is it?
It's unclear. So I guess it's that, it's the, it's a pond. Is there more than one pond?
There's no-
Yeah, well, is the pond further in on the site?
Right.
Now, the effluent discharges to a small stream.
There is a very small stream, it's probably about three feet wide.
And that stream does not run into the pond.
And that flows, that flows away from the pond.
Okay. That's, that was my understanding too, so I don't, I don't believe these odor issues are from the plant effluent.
I actually pulled in there again, once again tonight, and I have, prior to other meetings, I've been here, that pond is, despite the spray they have on it, it is covered in algae, almost solid. And then there's a, sort of a smaller secondary pond, which has no aeration.
Yeah, I think there might have been some concern that the plant effluent went through the pond somehow, but I, I don't think the DEC would allow that.
Right.
I can tell you from looking at it, because we work with these NBR plants quite a bit, the effluent that comes out of the pipe there is basically crystal clear, and has no odor.
All right. So as long as, yeah, as long as you can, you know, submit the documentation that, you know, staff is looking for.
Okay. I submit that through BE to get to-
Yeah, it's probably, so we have it up for the record, it's filed away, and then she'll forward it off to everybody who needs it.
Yep.
Just so we can confirm that there are no, you know, that there's no issues with what's being discharged.
Yep. Nope, that's, that is not a problem, because unlike some, that plant runs well.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, thank you all very much, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
That's my understanding of what's downstream. I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay. I know. So with that, the next item on the agenda this evening is Ober Creek Farm Brewery and Tasting Room Site Plan.
I already did that.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right.
But I explained that I didn't think of this anymore.
Well, good evening, and thank you for considering this. My name's Alex Reese, 89 New Hamburg Road. This is my partner in the brewing company, Phil Shaw, and this is Kyle Bardwell from Lavella. Just as a bit of background to this project, this relates to some old dairy barns. There was a dairy farm there until about 1961, when my father said he didn't want to see a milking cow in. And since then, it was used by Bob Basely for a small herd of Hereford cows, and storage for hay. But with Bob's passing, barns really aren't used for terribly much. I put a new roof on the big barn, and the smaller calf barn is in need of some tender loving care. I started Ober Creek Farm about 10 years ago. It's a vegetable operation, organic, in this town. And that was done in 2012. We have, we renovated the old milkhouse by the old barns, which served as our CSA pickup and our farm store. In 2016, we started, I met Phil and my other partner Kyle, and they were interested in brewing beer, and I love hops. So I started a hop yard, and we went for a farm brewing license under Agon Markets at New York State. And we started in a little five bay garage. We were open only three days a week, between four and seven. But our beer's pretty good, and people seem to enjoy it. And so we're looking for really what the next step is for that, for that business. And we thought, what approach for the use of the barns, keeping its agricultural nature of this, of this area, was to look at the adaptive reuse of the small caving barn as a tasting room, and the large milking barn as a new brewery. Now let me state, when I talk about a brewery, we are a nano brewery. Currently, we have a two to three barrel system, which isn't much bigger than if you brew in your garage. But in this state, we're planning to move up to a five barrel system. This isn't necessarily that we're going to be producing a hell of a lot more beer, it's just much more efficient to brew in, in five barrels rather than two to three barrels. We spent a lot of time trying to maintain the historic nature of these barns. And I sent our proposed planning to the state historic preservation office, and they were very excited about what we're planning to do. So again, we're here to answer questions, I'm sure you have tons of them, and we're here.
Okay. All right. Well, let's start with the board. Do any board members have any questions regarding the application?
I do not.
Okay.
Everything was pretty-
Yeah, not yet.
No, okay.
The only thing I'm, just a little clearer on those parking lots that were on there?
Yeah.
You know? Because it looked like you drive in, up one, down the other, and then dead end in the other, can you turn around at the top, and stuff like that?
Well, that-
They were kind of like unclear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Totally get it, we were trying to figure out. We have 54 parking spaces there, and we wanted to keep this, the in and out one way, so you would enter in one way at the top, because I know New Hamburg Road is not the easiest road to navigate. And I, people coming in were great, but I wanted to make sure that people going out were way down the road, so there was plenty, plenty of space. And so there is a slope there, so we were looking at two tiers of parking, 24 in one way, and that's wide enough so people can come in and back out. And another way, people coming in at an angle to make sure that they know which way to go out when they, when they come in. We plan to keep that a dirt and gravel road. I really want to try to keep as much as possible to a rural agricultural sort of set, and not be too formal about, about this, but I want to make sure it's safe, that's for sure. So if you have any suggestions-
If I remember correctly, do we need handicap parking there or anything?
Yeah.
And wouldn't that have to be blacktop?
Yes.
Did I see that on there? I don't remember it, yeah.
It is shown on, I'm sorry.
It's like a Jason-
I'm sorry.
It's like adjacent to the.
Yep. Was it? Okay. Yep. Yeah, they put it, put it close to their building, yeah, as close as possible for the.
And we have a, a wide area going down to the tasting barn, just for handicap parking and for emergency access. No other traffic's going to go, go down there.
They wouldn't need it for, I guess, we might be getting ahead of ourselves, but I had questions about the location of any refuse enclosure, and where that would be located, and how the trucks may access it.
Good question, and I'm going to write a note, because I don't have an answer for you.
And then, I was curious if, if they would also be going up that way. And then my other question was, I guess, delivery of, of any kind of, you know, material from elsewhere on the, on the farm to the brewery itself, and whether or not, you know, what kind of truck that it would be, and how deep into the.
Well, Kyle, you can answer this, but we did do analysis on the box trucks that we use, and that are the normal. Look, you look like you know how, better than I do.
He knows the, the letters and numbers that will signify this truck.
So we, we did allocate for a truck turning for a large delivery truck. So in purposes of what Alex was speaking, is we have egress only on the western part of, lower down New Hamburg Road. We are proposing grass pavers in that large central area, which would allow for a large turning or emergency vehicle to come to the site and loop around and exit back out this direction.
Okay.
So that would just be for emergency and truck vehicles.
A refuse is a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be next time, we'll, we'll know by next time.
All right.
Is lighting an issue there, too?
Yeah, I didn't want to, you know, I didn't want to interrupt. If the board has more questions, I've got two letters that I can go through whenever I'm ready.
That would be great, I saw that the county.
Yeah, because obviously, you did get the letters from both the planner and engineer. Okay.
Yeah, well, I only got one from the county, but I'm sure you know everything.
Sure, I think as of right now, we're just in receipt of the county planning comments. It's possible that maybe the engineering planner comments has, has around.
They wouldn't have been sent a while ago, they wouldn't have seen, sent in advance on the previous plan.
Right, yeah, so probably sent like three weeks ago.
We'll make sure that we take a look at that, but I do know that the comment from the county said that the lighting plan includes some areas with light levels exceeding five foot counters. Believe me, I want this as dark as possible within the range of, of safety. And, so anything you suggest that goes in that direction, I'm all in favor.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll take us through these two letters.
Go ahead, yeah, go through your letter.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I, we had some, we asked for some clarifications on the, the parking spaces, because the plan we reviewed, the calculation showed that there were 87 proposed spaces, but only 73 were shown. I don't know if that's been updated since the, the last time we looked at it, but.
I can answer.
Yeah, I, I apologize that, or, we, we, we thought you guys were going to be on the, the first meeting.
And I apologize for that.
Yeah, no, not, not a problem.
Because I was told one thing and another, and then, and then it was in Ohio.
We sent our letter in, in advance of that meeting, and apparently it didn't get to you, but, yeah, to coordinate with the, the fire department to gain their approval of the emergency access. Coordinate with both the fire department and town water system operator for the location of the fire hydrant.
Mm-hmm.
And also the water service for the site.
Thank you.
We, we want more information on how you're going to manage stormwater, because even though it's dirt gravel roads, they do compact over time and become essentially impervious. And just some additional information on the, the storm drainage that's currently shown on the plan, you know, giving us rim elevations for the, the catch basins and inverts and things like that.
Okay.
Everything else, we sort of already glossed over, so I'll turn it over to Malcolm.
I'll go through mine first. So we're looking at section 24055 is the special permit that they are applying for. Curious about turning templates on, on the plans for both the delivery truck, garbage truck, and emergency vehicles. And for the sake of efficiency, we can just do the, the largest of each of those categories.
Okay.
And showing access in and out of the site to wherever those specific vehicles would need to go. We pointed out the, the wetlands on the site, but I think they're also in an active agricultural field. But the, the disturbance of the wetland buffer will still need a wetland, a town wetland disturbance permit. We talked about the dumpster enclosure. We're deferring to the town engineer on site distance calculations, and the superintendent of highways on site distance. We had a similar comment about parking. Just clean up the parking calculations, and what I think would be useful is to find some way to visually make clear what is existing and what is proposed, because the site is developed to a certain degree.
There, there are 14 plus parking spots around the farm stand, which isn't included in this, but we'll make it clear.
Yeah, so we'll include that, to show how much of the driveway and how many of the parking spaces are existing, and then the proposed spaces, and then we have a total parking calculation that we can.
Okay.
There's a note that we'd like to see added to the landscaping plan, and also some detail to the planting schedule. And then, the lighting plan, there were a couple of things that I pointed out. As the county pointed out, there is a, a few minor examples of excessive lighting. The hottest, you know, the, the highest level of illumination is 6.4, and we cap it at five. For context, though, that's, that's very, very close. It's, it's not an egregious example, but if we can find opportunities to reduce the overall lighting, one of the ways that I, I see a lot to, you know, to keep the site dim, but also to enhance safety, looking at bollards, bollard lighting particularly along the walking paths.
Okay.
Good.
There is a pole height limit of 15 feet that I think that you are exceeding, and the color temperature is listed at 4,000 K, and the limit is 3,000 K. All of this is just, you know, minor modifications to the lighting fixtures that you've currently picked out. And we'd love to see a full environmental assessment form filled out and submitted for the board's review. I also just say, you know, in addition to the parking area, if you can show us on the plans, how much of the, how much of the building is existing, and how much of it is, is proposed?
Right.
Because the narrative suggested that there were going to be, you know, some level of expansion to the existing structures?
Yeah, there, there's a little bit of, of expansion mainly for the bathrooms, because I don't want to go into.
It would not have been designed to have.
And a little grain room, and a, something for the, the cool room for the, for the beer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just make sure when you, when you modify the plans, have that labeled, what, what, yeah, what, what the square footage of existing versus proposed is.
Okay.
And, and also for the, for the EAF, what that area disturbance is going to be, both, you know, the combination of expansions to the structures, but also the expansions to the driveway and.
Okay.
Also, it sounds like there are going to be very minor changes, but if we could get elevations on the buildings, what the buildings are going to look like.
I saw that, and that's easy enough to be done.
And then the county wrote you a letter. They're also looking to see architectural elevations of the buildings. They're also looking for, you know, both, both changes and additional detail to the landscaping and lighting plan. And they had a comment that I'm still not quite clear on, on the outdoor seating area at the brewery, is identified on the lighting plan, but it is not clear how patrons will access these, or the existing farm stand.
That, that I didn't understand either, but.
Not totally.
I can, I mean, they go in a door, and they come out the other door.
My plan, reading this, is to, is to call the county and just have a brief conversation with the person who wrote this, to figure out what the nature of this comment is. If you want to have the same conversation, or I can call you after I have that conversation, it's up to you.
That, that would be, that would be great, thank you. Well, we have some work to do.
I just have one question regarding bottling.
Yeah.
Will you be bottling on site?
We have a canning operation. It's very small, but we produce four packs. We have a, it used to be growlers, where you bring your, fill it up to take it home. Now we have prowlers, which you can make a, a can like this, and have it ready to go home. So it's mainly canning. We do do rarely a bottle run, but that's, it's done by hand.
No, my only question, my, my concern with respect to bottling is the use of water and.
Oh.
Water and sewer, you know, associated with the bottling process.
It's not a big process there. We have gone to Dan Keeler about the septic system, and he's taken a look at that, and we have, obviously, I mean, we've also gone to the highway, county highway, and they said fine for the.
Okay.
Stuff there. So, thank you.
The pizza's surprisingly good, too.
Yeah. All right. Okay, you've addressed everything on the letters at this point. All right, any other board members have any other questions?
What are your operation hours?
Well, at the moment, it's Thursday, 4 to 7, Friday, 4 to 7, Saturday, 12 to 7, and Sunday, 12 to 7.
And is it year round, or?
It is year round, but you have to wear a coat.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you planning to keep the same hours when you move into?
Uh, no. Uh, in this place, we may expand for the weekends up to nine. But this is a tasting room, it's not a restaurant, it's not a bar, this is for, you know, people come with their whole families, and they come with their dogs, and they just sit up there and enjoy life for a couple of hours.
Live music also?
We do have live music, and that has been an, an issue. There were some complaints from neighbors last summer, particularly when we started an amplification. One of the neighbors who complained was me, and, so we changed to an acoustic only, and the quality is a little mixed, but pretty good. But that's Saturday and Sunday.
You're going to be farther away from the houses now anyway, right?
Yes. This is a much better place for.
It'd be inside also, right?
Yeah.
You're planning to keep the farm stand and the CSA pickup. When you are revising the parking calculations, just make sure that you differentiate between the.
Thank you very, very, thank you very, very much, and put us on a, make us work, so I would, I would love to be here, if not August, beginning of September, because I want to work.
We have to wait for you to submit.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so obviously, you got to go.
Wait you to work.
All right, well, so you have your homework, you know, what you need to kind of put together for us, and, yeah.
Thank, thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I guess one point is for secret review, does, does the DEC have to weigh in on any of this?
We'll need a speedies, I think.
I, I, I was looking for the full EAF before I sort of came to the conclusion as to what agencies might be involved, and whether or not it was an unlisted action. I'm, I'm, I was waiting for the full.
Okay, yeah, sure. No, I just.
They will need to gain coverage under the general speedies permit for stormwater, so.
You don't happen to know if those are regulated wetlands by Army Corps, DEC, or?
No, I mean, these are.
They're in the farm.
Our own town.
They're just our wetlands.
I mean, New Hamburg Road is a county road, so, you know, the county and county health department will certainly be involved.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll await your next submission, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual review for the Flow Kingdom Ministries Church. What?
Are we going to get a chance for public comment on the Ober Creek?
It wasn't scheduled, it's not scheduled this evening for a public hearing. So they, this is their first submission to us, with a full submission to the board. We were just having a discussion with them tonight, just to see, they're going to resubmit in the future. Once they've resubmitted, and they've kind of dwindled down the number of open items that we have, we will schedule a public hearing for the future. Okay? So just, I mean, just, if you, just keep track of the agenda on the website, once we get to that point, we will schedule it, and you'll have opportunity to speak at that time.
They'll put a big sign out in front of the property, too.
Correct.
Listing when it's going to be.
It's going to be before, before they get approval of the.
Oh, yes. Yes.
It seems like you've gone pretty far down the road with this, before you've talked about whether it makes sense. So, you're talking about the height of name posts in the parking lot, and I think there's a lot that you said before that.
Again, this is their, this is their first submission to the board, their first full submission. It was a conceptual plan going back. So, you know, they've come back with what they have currently, and, you know, they're looking for, you know, feedback from the board, they've gotten reviews from the planner and the engineer regarding issues that need to be addressed, they need to tweak their plan. And again, they will resubmit, and at a future point, we will schedule a public hearing and allow public comment at that time. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, so with that, we've got our conceptual review now for the Flow Kingdom Ministry Church.
Good evening, my name is Christian Pajee, I'm the engineer for the applicant. I apologize for the lack of information that was submitted, and I do have a little bit more that I can just distribute quickly, so we can actually have some meaningful discussion, so.
Yeah, as long as you have a copy for this, to secretary, for the record.
Absolutely. And it's very brief, and just a bullet point, just to help people know it was submitted, was lacking. So this was submitted kind of under haste and duress. We got a call from the applicant a few weeks ago, that they had entered, entered into a, a lease under the assumption that this type of use was already permitted, so we were scrambling, trying to get in touch with both the applicant, and then working with the, and the planning and building department, to try to get something in, to have an initial discussion with the planning board, as to, you know, how, what, what the path forward would look like, and if this is something that the applicant could entertain and, and proceed with. But basically, what's proposed is off of 1070, at 1070 Route 9 in the town, the old aid frame that just recently got remodeled. On the first floor there, they're proposing a church, place of worship for Flow Kingdom Ministries. In the northern portion of the building, there's a massage parlor on the southern portion of the building there on the first floor currently. The, right now, what's submitted, what I just passed out, is just a very brief outline of what the operations would look like there. 95 seats, the assembly space is around 240 square feet, and that is what was submitted with the application, that hand drawn sketch that we got from the applicant. Regular services on Sundays only, 12:00 PM and 2:00 PM. And they indicated that every two months, there will be a, a get together of the pastors in the region, and it's nine to 10 people. in the region, and it's nine to 10 people, and that would happen once every two months or so, and only on Saturdays. The, just looking at the town's parking requirements, it appears that 24 spaces would be required for this size space, whether you're looking at the number of seats or the square footage of the area. The site is served by private water and sewer, onsite sewer disposal, so we know that any change in use would need to get approval from the health department. So after we submitted this application, we were able to foil the town's records, the planning and building file. In 2016, I guess there was a, an approval for Accura to do a, kind of a satellite location where they had some inventory parking there. We included just on the back end of that little packet, some snippets of that site plan that showed just general site information, because again, I know that none was really included in that original application. So obviously, the applicant was assuming that they could move forward with this, it was already a permit, they thought it was a permitted use, so they weren't contemplating having to do any site modifications. So that's one of the things that we're here to, to talk to the board and the consultants, to see what the review of this would look like. It looks like it's a permitted use, looking at the bulk and area table in the town code, permitted use by site plan, I would assume, and looking at the 2016 approval for the Accura dealership, it didn't look like that required any site improvements. So I just don't know which other site features would come under review if this were to go to a full site plan review. You know, looking at site lighting, parking, I would assume parking would be a big one, which is why we kind of pointed it out. It looks like, and we would have to demonstrate that there's ample parking, which I believe that we, I believe that they would, but we have to go through that exercise. So really, again, looking for just a little bit of direction from the board and the board's consultants, as to what level of review this would really fall under.
All right. So I'm just, I'm just looking at the back, on the last page here with the, so the two-story building, the existing is 46, but the proposed is 46 as well. Does that account for the increase in, the increase for the church? Because obviously, the calculation as an assembly space is going to be, you're going to have more parking required for that than you would the, if it was just being used as office space.
Right. So everything on that back page was actually just a snippet from the approved plan from 2016.
Okay, so this was all cut?
Exactly.
So you didn't kind of try to, okay.
So that, yeah, so they, what that table is just showing is that they had existing 46 spaces for the second, second story, the two-story building, which is that front building. And those are all shown in the front, all of those spaces along Route 9 and along the south property line. The one-story building in the rear had eight existing parking spaces. They were proposing, if you look under that vehicle store, 79 spaces, and that's in that southerly section of the property.
Yep.
So the assembly space would require more spaces per square foot than an office space. I believe the town requires three space, one space per 300 square feet for an office, professional office space, versus one space per 100 square feet for assembly. But for this, the fact that it would only take place on Sundays, the thought is that we'd be able to demonstrate that there would be no, you know, all of the spaces during the week would be dedicated towards the office space, whereas on Sunday, most of those spaces, if not all, we just have to go through the exercise of seeing what those hours are. But the idea is that most of those spaces, again, if not all, would be available on Sunday service days.
Okay. So basically, proposing to submit a parking analysis, shared parking analysis?
Correct.
Okay.
That is septic there.
Yeah.
Septic there, right?
Yeah. Septic, yes, yep.
Would there be anything more involved now when you're looking at occupancy of 100 people, even though it's only one day a week, but-
Potentially.
100 flushes in two hours as opposed to three? You know, what's left of that septic out there? It's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
So that's something that we know that we'd have to address with the health department. Usually that is an equation of the square footage also. So there, we need to see if there are, or if there would be requirements to improve that septic system, and any improvements, any changes to that system, we need to go to the health department. I think that just by default, the health department would require a sign-off just on the fact that it's a change in use, so they're going to want to look at this regardless.
Definitely for a change of use here, absolutely.
Okay.
And just for reference, if they do require some sort of modification, likely what, how that would be handled is a dosing chamber to spread that Sunday flow, you know, throughout the course of the week, so you don't have to change the capacity of the leach fields themselves.
Right. Okay. I can't think of anything else.
So the question, I mean, would be, you know, would this be looked under, you know, the complete lens of the town zoning for, you know, landscaping, lighting?
Yeah.
I know that there's, there's even some encroachments in the right of way, I'm not sure if those, there was easements or anything like that, but that's a New York State DOT issue, but again, the fact that there was a 2016 review.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I mean, really, there's no, there's really no proposed outdoor change to anything at this point.
Correct.
Correct, that everything's going to, everything's basically the same, other than the fact that you have to calculate out the parking, just to make sure it complies, or you can comply with the parking requirements. But at the same time, there's no proposal to change any of the lighting.
Correct.
Which I believe we looked at probably, what, a year or two ago?
I think it was an architectural review.
It was just an architectural at that point?
That was for the building.
Yeah, so I mean, it's still, I mean, existing lighting, and they're not changing it, so, I mean, the existing, I mean, it's up to the rest of the board if they should address all these other issues.
If it's a use change, yeah, right. I don't know.
I mean, it's really, it's just, it's basically just a, yeah, it's a use, it's-
It didn't appear that those-
It's one of those awkward things because of the-
It's a use change or-
It's not, it's not really, it's a use, it is, but it isn't. The problem is it, it was always, this has always been allowed to have this use. It's just, it was never proposed as such in the past. That was the, that was the concern. What do you think? Pat? What do you think? What do I think?
And it didn't appear that those items came under review in 2016 when it was under review, site plan review for the, for Accura.
Yeah.
And there was improvements to the outside, I believe. They just, it was strictly looking at that parking area.
Accura was just, they were just, I remember, I was on the board when that took place, that was a-
So one of the issues that came up back then, and I think also prior to that with herring sanitation, was I don't know if there was any documentation as to the location of the septic. So I don't know if you guys have that, because my, I mean, I don't, as I, I don't see a septic on here.
There was actually another, you know, I'm kicking myself for not including that. There's another view on this plan that shows a septic.
Okay. Yeah, because that was one, I mean, that was a kind of an issue.
That might have come up years ago with Villalobos and Herring. They've been back and forth a few times over the last 20 years.
I think that, yeah, I remember, I remember the septic, I was, Bob Gray was bringing up about that.
Yeah, because it was some concern, because they were talking about moving car trailers and stuff on the site.
Right.
And I believe it was somewhere, somewhere within the parking area.
I think that the septic, one of the septic, I think there's a few, actually.
Right.
Problem is underneath that Accura parking area.
Yeah.
That's what was shown on the plan.
Yeah.
And those plans were done by Mark Dazov, so.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and it is, you know, it is a, you know, a permitted use in its own.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I just, I don't know if it's, I mean, there was a site plan, I guess-
So, I mean, it would be a site plan amendment, but-
Yeah, if it's a site plan amendment, to go through and have to redo all, you know, the landscape, the lighting, and everything else, as long as everything's complying with that, that site plan that's on file, I don't think there's any real issue to rehash any of those.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, with respect, I mean, one of the questions is the floor plan here for the first floor, there's a bunch of office space in addition to the 40 by 60 space, and I guess the question is, will that, will that be occupied, you know, separate, I mean, is that part of this occupancy, or is that a separate occupancy?
Well, that would, that would definitely be part of the, you know, the parking analysis.
Correct.
So the parking analysis is going to be basically for the whole building, you're going to, you know, the trade-off of just weekends versus, you know, the offices only being occupied Monday to Friday, and that could be, you know, shown out onto, on your analysis for us to review.
Yeah, along that line, too, you said that they were only using this on the weekends, just so they're not doing like any youth services, Bible study, anything like that?
No, I asked that question, too, and the only thing that they came back with was that bimonthly seven hours.
The one meeting you talked about.
So, so what we would definitely want to include in any submission would be a more detailed narrative of the proposed operations.
Yeah, the hours of operation, because, yeah, yeah.
And what, how many occupancies are upstairs?
I need to get that information, too.
Okay. I mean, you'd have to put that in the parking, but again, that'd be shared.
Yeah.
How many businesses are still on the main floor besides the spa?
I think the spa is the only one, because my understanding is that this would occupy the rest of the first floor.
Could you just verify that?
Yes.
Because then I'd like to change our records.
Yep. So part of, that's a, part of the operations also is the applicant, Dr. Israel Peña is also a psychologist, and will be operating his office Monday through Friday out of that, one of those offices. But as far as I know, that, that is an approved use, so that wouldn't be necessarily part of the site plan, but we'll have to itemize all of the uses on any parking schedule, just so you guys are, it's crystal clear what exactly is happening in that building, and make sure everything is accounted for.
And he was already given a change of occupancy, so-
Okay.
To my knowledge, he must be in there, or at least he can.
He, okay.
I know it was issued.
He said he received something, he wasn't sure what it was.
Well, it was very specific that he could go in for the Monday through Friday meeting with his clients, but he couldn't hold services until the board gave him approval.
Okay.
So with that, so I guess basically, I mean, we're really just looking at possibly a submittal for, you know, for amended site plan. You know, with the information that we just requested, as long as it addresses, you know, all the concerns, I think we should be okay.
Okay.
You know, again, it's just more asking to just change the interior use of the building, just to, you know, to show the air compliance with parking, showing compliance with, you know, whatever's been previously approved, I guess, on the site plan.
Okay. So as far as demonstrating compliance with the previous site plan?
I imagine you could get a copy of that and just verify that everything that was required to be there in the past is still there.
Okay.
Yeah, not that they went and they stripped out all the landscaping and they, you know, did whatever over time.
One thing I noticed on just the town's code, and I forgot to bring it up, was relative to places of worship and assembly spaces adjacent to residential areas, requires that the setbacks be doubled. And I don't know if that's going to be an issue, except for, I think the rear of the law abuts, I think, like, a multifamily residential property, RMF5, I think.
I think the rear abuts stage door road, so that's all commercial. You have that pre-existing Tassell Court-
Yeah.
-next door-
Yeah.
-and the spa up front. The other side is Guardian Storage, but these are all pre-existing buildings.
Right.
If the rear property does abut a residential property, would the setback then be measured to, I mean, the only use that's proposed for place of worship is the front building, so would it be measured to that building? Because there's two technically primary uses, I think, on this property, with the herring one in the back.
Right. I would go to the building.
Okay.
Because the parking, I assume, is openly in the front.
Right.
And I think a lot of that land is unused.
Right.
It's still vacant. I think we have a proposal for a warehouse.
Okay.
So I really don't think it will come into play there.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, but that shouldn't be from the rear property, it doesn't seem to be an issue.
So as long as the parking analysis demonstrate that, demonstrates that it's compliant, and there's no exterior improvements that are needed, and there's no deviations from the approved site plan, you don't see any improvements-
I don't believe, I mean, what does everybody else feel? With that, everybody's fine, as long as whatever was previously approved is there on the site? Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
All right.
Sounds good. I will report back and possibly be seeing you soon.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
You, too.
Good night.
So with that, we're to the end of the agenda for the evening. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? No? Okay. If not, make a motion.
You're right.
Say goodnight. Okay. So motion's made?
Okay.
Seconded? All favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's it, done.